For entities like schools, single point of entry is a huge deal. And so hopefully, I believe that the PoolPAC people continue to give out a nice chunk of money each year, and I will just mention it publicly and encourage you that if you have any projects, they're well worth applying. Simple application process, about a half-page long, one PoolPAC websites, and pull down the grant programs, you look at it, and easily done. The grant committee usually meets a couple times a year, and so there's always time to apply for something. The next thing that I want to talk about, and it is huge when it comes to the insurance program, but with respect to the insurance program, we have this thing called the EAP Employee Assistance Program. And this is important because when we look at insurance, we're kind of going, what does this have to do with insurance? But in reality, the EAP program is really important because what we're trying to do is we're trying to create better risk, and we want healthy employees. And the employees have access to this confidential program, the EAP program, through KeyPro, the same program that the state of Nevada uses. And as I said, it's confidential, it's open to the employees, open to dependents of employees. The most looked at issues today are emotional well-being, addictions, there's some consultations in the areas of divorce, family law, elder law, estates, and things like that. So, and one nice story that I have to tell is that one of my entities puts a notice in the paychecks every two weeks with respect to EAP and promotes the employee assistance program to all of the employees of their particular entity. And so they see it all the time, and they know that it's available to them. And again, I can't stress how important it is to have healthy employees, because if we have healthy employees, that's probably going to equate to lower risk, which will further equate to a reduced amount of losses. So, important, but that figure entity has the second highest utilization rate in the state of Nevada and all the public entities that are in pool. So, it works. It's an important thing, and it's something that should be mentioned over and over. That's the EAP program. There's a list of all the services that, or a number of the services that the Pool and PAC people provide on page nine of the report, as well as in the backup material, there's even more detailed information on that. As I said, the biggest things right now are cyber issues, so if you've got a cyber issue, call the pool people up and get them involved. The newest item is, and I think it's being piloted right now, is a program called MVP, Member Evaluation Performance, and it is really a deep dive into what's behind the insurance programs, the nuts and bolts of the entire program, with all the benefits, and it is being piloted this summer, I think. Am I correct in saying that we're off and running on, or we're working on that?
We're working on it, yeah. Right now, it's on a number-by-number basis, so.
Okay. So that's a list of the member services. Also on pages nine and 10, a list of all committee members, and I would say thank you for your service. It's been well appreciated over the years, and thank you for your service. Here, CEO. The, again, the both Pool and PAC are member-driven. There's executive committees formed by various representatives from the public entities, about 45, half-40 privileges. There's 133 public entities right now in Nevada Public Agency Pool. And so they do, they do a big job in terms of helping guide and moving us forward. So, they're listed there. Then, the last thing that I would touch on for White Plains County is, we want to look at the program summary, and if we go to page 11, we can see a little mini-picture of it. Our program cost was $311,158 last year. It's $385,800 this year, which is up 23%. And remember earlier, I said that the average rate increase for pool members was 5.93% plus exposures. That would, again, be increases in vehicles, contents, building limits, amount of equipment insured, or the amount of payroll. So, but our uptick is a little bit skewed, because we had about 55.5% increase in the values of White Plains County. We went from $54 million and change to $85 million and change simply due to the addition of the Justice Center. And so, so in that regard, that's the explanation for that. I would point out, too, that I think the Justice Center is a beautiful facility, and I will tell you that the jail works. I'll have to tell you a little story that I was invited up here to review the insurance and get ready for the addition of the Justice Center last fall. And so Elizabeth and I went through the entire facility, which, again, beautiful, very, very nice. And the last place that we went was the jail. And so it was, again, very nice to see, and we got into the jail and collected. The door locks, there's nobody else in the building except for Elizabeth and I. So, you know, my first, or somebody's first reaction might be, how are we going to get out of here? My first reaction is, I wonder if my rates are too high. Got to do a little time in here, but we got out, and Elizabeth was able to make a call or two, and so we got out. But, so anyhow, that's the picture of the pool, that's the picture of both Pool and PAC for county, and both Pool and PAC for fire. I might have gone a little too fast. If I did, feel free to ask me questions. Steve is an expert on everything that I cannot answer. Steve is in charge of all the underwriting. He does a tremendous job in negotiating with all the underwriters all over the world, in London, the U.S., the East Coast, and whether they're cyber people, or general liability people, or the property people at Lloyd's of London, the boiler and machinery people at Travelers, the pollution people at Ironshore, he's involved in all that. So, he does a great job, and again, as I said, when the pool people first started their budgeting process for this year, and they projected 10%, 15%, and then had a coming in 5.93% rate increase. And then, the other thing, too, is that on the last day of negotiations, they dropped the rate increase, or were able to hammer it down from over 7% to about 5.93%, which is pretty big when you consider that we have thousands and thousands of vehicles insured, and we have $5,993 million worth of property insurance in addition to our liability, our cyber, our pollution, and so forth. So, so, big job, nice job, well done. And there is, in these reports, if you want to explore them in more detail, the first section is our summary report, the second section is the pool summary report, the third section is complete schedules, whether there's the property insurance, the vehicle insurance, all vehicles, or that's the, the equipment is broken out. And then the fourth section is the workers' comp assessment pages. So you can look at those if you want more detail or more explanation. But I think that is it. Do you want to add anything?
For the record, I'm Steven Romero, I'm with PoolPAC. Some of you might remember me as your agent, but that was several years ago. I just want to bring up a couple things that Alan had pointed out with regards to PAC, which is your workers' compensation, with regards to the experience mod. I don't know if a lot of you understand what that actually means. Experience mods start at 1, and right now, the county has added 92, so you're receiving an 8% credit over the normal. The fire department's receiving a 9% credit over the normal. So you need to congratulate your employees with regards to that, because keeping that underneath that 1 is fantastic. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that PoolPAC, we are member-owned, so you only, I use the word PoolPAC, but PoolPAC is actually you and the other 133 members. They own PoolPAC. They decide what happens with PoolPAC, and you're a part of that. In quoting the programs, we do go out every single year, we do quote your programs on the reinsurance basis. We have Public Risk Mutual, which is owned, again, by you and is our captive, and it takes on certain capacities that need to be taken on. It was brought up out of grants and about the EAP, also our HR services. Over the last four years, White Plains County has utilized 65,000 services from PoolPAC. So, just want to bring that up. Any questions?
Anyone got anything for Alan or from Steve? Now's the time to speak up, but thank you both for your presentation and very enlightening to all of us, and we appreciate it. I am going to read each item individually, because the last two specify a dollar amount, and I think that's important to put in the public record. So, at this moment, if you don't have anything, or nobody else on the commission has anything, we're going to read each item one at a time. I do want to put into the public record the dollar amount. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So at this time, there's no questions. I'm answering a motion to approve item number two, which was a discussion, approval of the workman's compensation insurance renewal. Can I say that much, or do I have to read the whole thing?
I mean, you can, you read the whole thing at the beginning, so you can be as brief as you want, as it has to do with.
I'm going to do that, I'm going to be as brief as possible. This is renewal proposal for the White Plains County Fire Protection. Item three is, okay, I'll look for a motion to approve that.
Move to approve item two, as presented.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Item three, approval of the workman's compensation insurance renewal proposal for White Plains County from the Public Agency Compensation Trust, P and PAC. Look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Item three, I will read it in its entirety because of the dollar amount. Approval of the FY 2022/23 proposal for fire district property liability insurance from the Nevada Insurance Pool, and approval for payment from the fiscal year FY '23 funds in the amount of $38,693.56. Look for a motion to approve that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Item five is discussion of possible action, the approval of the FY 2022/23 renewal proposal for White Plains County property liability insurance from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, and approval for payment from the fiscal year 2023 funds in the amount of $385,008.20. Look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passionate, unanimous. Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now go to page three. Item six is a discussion for possible action, the monthly financial reports for May 2022 Alibis Grants and Finance Credit.
Thank you, and they are in your backup materials in their normal format. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'd ask for you to approve as presented.
Any questions? I will refer a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Item seven, is discussion of possible action, approval of the minutes from the special joint fire commission meeting and county commission meeting held May 11, 2022. Any additions, corrections, or subtractions? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Last item on here is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? Hearing none, any public comment in the audience? Seeing none, George, you got any?
No, you scared me when you yelled at me.
Sorry about that.
Sure you are.
Okay, so at this time, we recessed county commission meeting, fire, special fire commission, county commission meeting, and rejoined the county commission meeting, and right now, we're going to move to page four. Item, let's see what item, yeah, it's on there. For page four, item A is under Department head Brett North, Emergency Management Director. Item A is discussion for possible action, ratification of the grant application made by Tabitha Hamilton to the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG FY 2022 program from the Department of Public Safety Division of the Emergency Management, for emergency management supplies and equipment in the amount of $20,000. The required county match is $20,000, and will be provided through in-kind emergency management, serious, and general fund wages. Brett?
It's, what we're doing is buying computers and monitors and stuff to update the ELC stuff, so get it up to, so it's secure.
Does anybody got a question there? Then I'll look for a motion to approve. Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. We are now a little bit before our collective bargaining, you know, 10 o'clock, so we're going to go down the list to item two, county commissioners, there's none. Item B is elected officials, Catherine Backer, treasurer. Item A is discussion for possible action, approval of the return of sale of real estate pursuant to NRS 361.595 from the tax auction that took place on May 20, 2022. Catherine, you on the phone?
Hi, I am, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, so this is just after the sale, I come and get this recorded with you guys. We sold all but two properties. One of the two properties is, has been redeemed, and then the other one is just too high-priced because it's got nuisance things on it, so I'll have to work on it, come and see what we can do. But other than that, we sold all the things that were on the tax sale, it went well, and we're done for this year.
How much did you receive in revenue on the tax sale?
So, the total amount was $85,300. 68, 92638 of that is going to go in excess proceeds and maybe claim sometime over the next year. The county portion that's already been paid into the general fund by receipt is $9,495.97. We only had like one, two, three, four, eight properties. So we are, we really, that's the lowest amount of properties I've ever taken in a tax sale.
Good job, thank you. Anybody got any questions for that, from Catherine? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the return of sale of real estate.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Well, can we get you done here in 10 minutes, James?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I have one more thing on there, Richard?
Okay, I got it. Item B, discussion update on the Treasurers' report for April 2022.
So that's just my monthly report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody got anything of Catherine? Hearing none, thank you Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was an update. So item two on page three is James Beecher, District Attorney. Item A is discussion for possible action, the approval to execute amendment number two to one Nevada agreement on the allocation of opioid recoveries. For the allocation of opioid recoveries previously agreed upon by the White Plains County in August 2021, which will direct the state of Nevada as to the process by which monies received from the litigation defendants will be divided, calculated, and allocated to local governments, including White Plains County, in order for the state of Nevada to begin issuing payments of litigation settlement funds from Johnson &amp; Johnson to local governments as of, as soon as June 15, 2022. James?
So this amendment is basically just allowing our council to receive the money in our behalf, in order so that it can just officially make the payments, receive the payments, and disburse the payments. Part of that is going to be front-loading the, our portion of the payments to the attorneys out of, out of the money we're receiving. Again, none of that money is coming from a general fund or anything like that. The reasoning from that is their costs are front-loaded, and we have an 18-year agreement to continue to receive money from the distributors of Johnson &amp; Johnson.
And just to be perfectly clear, to have it on the record, this is from Johnson &amp; Johnson only. Right.
I believe this applies to, the Johnson &amp; Johnson will be paying at a faster rate than the distributors, but this one agreement applies to the entire Nevada one agreement, which also includes the distributors.
Okay, thank you. Anybody got any questions to that? This was a discussion item for possible action, and does anybody have any question of James on opioid allocation? If not, we'll look for.
I do have one question. And James, do we have anything outlined as where the funds will go? That's one thing that we've not talked a lot about.
So we, we created an account where it will be, you know, separately collected, but then we'll need to come back before the county commission when we come up with how exactly we're going to spend that money, and it has very strict requirements, both through legislation and the agreement that we signed. So we'll have to.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, you, I don't just have a blank check to access that.
Yeah.
If that's what you're asking for, you guys have to approve that.
Do we have any idea on any amounts?
So, estimates only. Right now, it's estimated that our total share will be 1.6 million from, again, only the distributors of Johnson &amp; Johnson. This doesn't include anything else that's pending. And Johnson &amp; Johnson is on accelerated timeline, as I said. The distributors is on 18-year timeline, so it'll be something in the neighborhood of less than $100,000 a year that we'll be seeing into that account that we could rely on for those, those terms of years. You know, on a future agenda, words, agenda is discussed, if we can talk about ideas on how to spend that, but that's approximately what we're looking at.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. We'll go to page four, item three, which is Nicole Baldwin, county clerk. Item A, discussion for possible action, the approval of the request for the appointment from Marion Perez to the local emergency planning committee representing Duckwater and the Shishaw Drive.
Thank you, Chairman. So you guys probably recall, we recently accepted her resignation because she thought she was going to move and change jobs, but that fell through, so she's staying, and she wants to continue to serve on left seat, representing Duckwater for Shishaw Drive, so she reapplied.
Anyone got a problem there? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve, Mrs. Perez.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Mike, you've got quite a bit, and we have a 10 o'clock, so let's take four minutes off and come back at 10 o'clock with the collective bargaining. Because Mike's got a point of view, Elizabeth's got a point of view. Well, we can do the consent agenda right now, take care of these items before we go. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. And then item four on page six is notice of untimed items. Item A is discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the May 11, 2022 county commission meeting, and the special joint meeting with fire.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Ian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. So right now, we'll take a quick break, we'll come back for our 10 o'clock timed items, which is on page three, and then that should be in about four minutes or five minutes. So we'll take a quick break. Okay, we'll go back in this section, it's a little bit after 10, and we have a timed item on page three, at 10 o'clock. Item C, collective bargaining agreement. Item one is a public hearing discussion for possible action, approval of a collective bargaining agreement between, a public hearing on proposed agreement between White Plains County, Nevada, and the White Plains County Sheriff's Employees Association for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. Elizabeth Francis and James Beecher, Michael Lee. So whoever wants to speak to that, please do.
Thank you, the loud clearance that we have a public hearing before the county commission can take action to approve. We did go ahead and get this out onto the website, red line document showing the changes that have been made, and I would invite any members of the public or that would like to provide feedback on it, to go ahead and take this opportunity to do so.
Okay, I'd kind of like to break down what we agreed with the sheriff as far as dollars go. I don't even know about, if there is any increase in leave or anything like that, just a brief update on it.
Okay, so we did go ahead and cover that at our last meeting, but let me just grab the tentative agreement real quick, and we'll walk you through what those changes look like. At the back of the agenda item backup that I provided for this item is the three-year cost breakdown as required pursuant to NRS, so that was in your backup. And hang on just a second, I can go ahead and pull my 10 a.m. item here. So, the material changes in the contract were a minor change to how we handle holiday pay for a sheriff who is off duty and not scheduled to work and called into work, and will still receive holiday pay that they should have received had they not worked. We did some technical language clarification under leave of absence, Article 14, that had no financial impact. For uniforms, we have had in the union agreement for quite some time that we can replace items for an officer that are lost in the line of duty, such as glasses, contact lenses, watches, flashlight, cellphone, up to $100. We've increased that up to $500, and require now an incident report signed by the sheriff to get that reimbursement. So that's just updating, and we don't have that many claims, so the impact of that will not be significant. The salaries did go up, so for the salaries, in the upcoming fiscal year, there will be a 3% COLA on pay table, and we will add step nine. Right now, they're on an eight-step pay table, this will add step nine, allowing those who are at the top end of the pay scale to get one more step now, and the thought is that this will assist with retention if we have a longer pay table. Then, on July 1, 2023, which is the second year of the contract, the COLA will be 3%. And then, yeah, on July 1, 2024, the third year, the three-year agreement, it will be adjusted by 2%, and we will add step 10 to the pay table. All employees will get a step increase on July 1 of each year now, and new hired employees who are not eligible to work in their position because they don't have posts or they require field training will be brought in 10% below step 1, in the past, that's 5% below. This offsets our cost of having someone who's there to train them. And then also, we added language that allows the sheriff to hire a new employee from another law enforcement agency at a higher step based on years of experience and training at his discretion, and union members cannot agree if he does that. We changed the longevity pay so that now at eight, at six years, they'll get $1,500, at 11 years, they'll get $2,000, and these are annual payments for longevity, and at 16 years, they'll get $2,200. And that just accelerated that, so that once they get to six years, they'll start receiving longevity. Again, this is an incentive to try and keep longevity in our staff. Employee wellness, it used to read that they had to be in the gym eight ti, more than eight times per month, now it's eight days or more per month to get that $30 per month. Um, employee wellness, it used to read that they had to be, uh, in the gym eight ti- more than eight times per month. Now it's eight days or more per month to get that thirty dollars per month.